Good evening. This is the meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Newcastle, May 29, 2019. Mr. Secretary?
Okay. William and Hillary Clinton.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Brad Demott. I'm an architect representing the Clintons. We're here tonight requesting 21 variances. That's a new personal record. And we've broken those into two separate applications. The first one is really, and we've done this according to responsibility in terms of some of these are Secret Service related, some of these are more personal Clinton-related. So, we can go through all of them and then feel free to respond to any questions. So, the first thing were, well, let me back up in terms of the big picture. The Clintons moved back, moved to town in roughly 1999. At the time, they requested a couple of variances to secure the property. There was a guardhouse at the front gate, which is down here. Five variances were approved for that. There was also a perimeter fence that was, a variance was granted to exceed the six-foot height, and so it was eight-foot high primarily for security reasons. So, both those variances had a five-year time limit. They were supposed to be renewed every five years. Well, that didn't happen when 2004 rolled around, so they've been expired ever since. So, we're here primarily to, because of the two guardhouses, we're proposing to remove them and rebuild them because they're 20 years old and they were built very poorly to begin with. And what we just discovered, because they were torn down in the last week or so, and these literally were built on no foundation, not even, no piers, just literally, they're kind of like sheds set on concrete blocks on the dirt. So, these are, and they're mold, they're really not really habitable. So, really, the driving force of this whole, the reason why I'm here is to rebuild the guardhouses. And then, once that came into play, there were a whole, with a new sheriff in town, there was a laundry list of things that we needed, that we needed to clean up at the same time just to legalize everything. So, just to take these one at a time. The front guardhouse, at the time, back in 1999, did request, required five or six variances. And the new guardhouse is roughly going to be in the same general location. It's also going to need five variances. One of those is a use variance. This is going to be a little closer to the front yard setback. It's also going to be a little closer to the side yard setback because now that, since they bought the adjacent property, the Secret Service guys need a line of sight to what's their guest house. The guardhouse would also require variances for building coverage and development coverage and also, we're over an FAR. And most of those things also applied back in 1999.
Just out of curiosity, why are the dimensions of the guardhouse changing?
Bigger because there will now be three Secret Service agents in there at times during special events. And the current guardhouse is roughly six feet by seven feet inside, which is pretty tight for one person, much less three. Okay. So, the second guardhouse, which is back here in the northern corner of the property, that was built without a permit, so, without a variance. And I think that was really built shortly after they moved in and, you know, the Secret Service was up and running and they realized that they needed a little additional coverage, which they didn't have. So, that guardhouse was put up very quickly again, without permits, without variances. What we're proposing to do is to remove that, build another guardhouse in roughly the same general location, it's roughly the same general size, and it would also need six variances. A use variance, side yard setback, rear yard setback, building coverage, development coverage, and FAR.
That too was put up without a foundation or piers.
Exactly. Right. And, so, the third, the third issue with, as far as this application goes, has to do with an exterior stair that's on the rear of the carriage house. Carriage house being back here on the second floor of that carriage house is where, is really where the Secret Service office is. And I believe there used to be internal access between that, what used to be a garage, and now it's been converted to an office and an exercise room. But there used to be internal access, that stair got torn out. So, there was an exterior stair built along the rear edge of that carriage house, just primarily for access to the Secret Service guys. And back then, this is 1999, oh, I'm sorry, actually, it's 2002, a variance was applied for the stair encroaching on the rear setback. It was deemed unnecessary at the time, and so they built it. But then, what happened now is it was, the position of the building inspector is that it needs to be legalized when you have variance for it and really kind of a retroactive permit.
I'm sorry. It was determined, it was presumed that a variance wasn't required at that time?
Right. So, they applied for variance, and I think during the meeting, due to the circumstances, the zoning board deemed that a variance was not required. You know, technically, it would be, but they kind of overridden it.
Before we get away from the...
Guardhouses?
...guardhouse, originally, there used to be an apartment on the first floor of that building, the carriage house.
The carriage house.
Is it still there? Is it being used?
No, I don't believe so. I believe half of it was converted to Bill's office, the other half is an exercise room.
Okay.
Right. And then, second floor...
I know there was, there was an apartment there.
And it still looks like a garage. There's still garage doors on it.
Yeah, it always looked like a garage. I'm just wondering what happened with that apartment?
No, no, I don't believe there's any apartment there. So, the stair would really just need a variance for encroaching on the rear yard setback. And the last issue, as far as Secret Service and security goes, is the fence. The fence was put up back in 1999. It was, a variance was granted to go from six feet to eight feet, and that fence is essentially still there, and we're just looking to renew it since technically it expired. And with all, with the guardhouses, both guardhouses and also the fence, the understanding, what we would like to do is to propose that they not have this contingency that they've been renewed every five years, but that they simply be removed once the Clintons vacate the property. So, they'd be torn down and it gets reverted back to, you know, the guardhouse would be gone because it'd be done.
The guardhouse.
And then, the fence would be lowered to six feet to be in conformance with the code.
And what about the outside stairway? I remember originally that we stipulated that the stairway could stay until they moved or sold the house.
Well, I think the stair would probably need to remain indefinitely.
You're looking for a variance to keep that permanently?
Because that would be the only access to the second floor.
There is no more access?
There's no internal stair.
I know there used to be.
Right.
Okay.
So, I think, so I would propose that the both guardhouses and the fence be allowed to remain indefinitely until the Clintons move, and then they'd be, the guardhouse removed, the fence lowered to six-foot height. And then, but the stair, I think, should really remain just because it really is the only access to the second floor. And that second floor, obviously, would just be a different use.
Is there any way to reestablish access from the interior of the building?
Most likely is.
Difficult?
Some interior remodeling. I haven't been in there personally, but it's, anything's possible.
Yeah, there's not any way to do that.
There's not, there's always a way.
If you're going to speak, couldn't we ask you to come to the microphone? Identify yourself for us, please.
Hi, I'm Damian Amadeo. Amadeo Contracting. I've been on the property since 2002, performed some work there. I did not put up any of the guardhouses or anything. I will be doing the guardhouses for this new proposal. I'm familiar with the detached garage. There is not any way, the way it's currently situated with his office and the exercise room, there's really no way to get upstairs with all of the equipment and all the wiring that goes into the second floor. It's near impossible to kind of get a stair in there on that second floor.
Okay.
Sorry, didn't mean to...
No, that's okay. Thank you.
All right. So, those are the first application for you, which are primarily Secret Service related. And, you know, they're really, primarily, they're all issues of national security. And it's, as far as hardship goes, I mean, both guardhouses were poorly built and, you know, they're really uninhabitable. The one guardhouse, the front guardhouse, does need to be bigger than the current one for more agents. And that would explain, and also, the sightlines to both properties really explains the, both the increase in size, but also the fact that it has to be closer to the side yard setback Exterior stair, we talked about, only means of access. And then, the stair, or the fence, rather, just needs to be eight feet high for security reasons.
What was the concept of the five-year threshold as far as the special use permits being five years, expiring in five years?
Okay. But was it a special permit or was it zoning variance? I didn't think it was a special permit.
Well, your use variance would expire in five years. And that would be the guiding force in the timeline.
It always gives the zoning board a chance to let five years go by and see if there's any issues, and then it can be revisited. But it'd be very unusual for a zoning variance to have a renewal date.
Eric, do you have an opinion on the...
I mean, it's not a typical situation, so I think under these circumstances, it's appropriate. You know, the standards would be, since the use variance was previously granted, I think it's appropriate to, you know, consider the hardship and the other circumstances present with respect to when the board considers the use variance in analyzing that issue. I mean, obviously, there's no financial harm here, but there are other circumstances that the board has to take into account in determining the variance in this situation. The one thing with respect to the use variances that you would have to do is make an initial determination under SECR, because use variances are not, are considered as unlisted actions. So, the first step you would take in considering the use variances is whether there are any significant environmental impacts caused by the guardhouses or the use variance for the guardhouses. So, that would be the first step the board would have to take and render an environmental determination, whether it's, whether there are no significant environmental impacts and it's a negative determination, or if you feel there are a significant environmental impact, you would have to render a positive determination. So, that would be the first step the board would need to take.
In your estimation, are there any environmental impacts that the board should consider?
None.
Is the carriage house sprinklered now?
Yes.
The sprinkler system in there?
Yes, that was installed back in 1999. And it's actually one of the open items to close out the building permit. We just need the engineer who designed it to do a walkthrough and sign off on it, which was never done.
It's code confined otherwise.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Is the... Any of the FAR also?
Yes, we had, both guardhouses increased the maximum FAR.
I think with the FAR and development coverage, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, those relate to other variances that you're requesting also with respect to the other application? The, does that have an impact on the FAR and the development coverage as well, the pool one?
Some of the other things, yes, there are other things that trigger development coverage.
So, I mean, approving the development coverage to 18,367 at this point is more than you need for the specific items that we're being asked to do under this application, right?
That's the cumulative amount.
That's the cumulative. And the last time we approved the development coverage, it was, I think, up to 13,500, right?
I'm not sure.
I think that was, that's what the 2002 application said.
Is that specific to the one acre zone?
It's specific to this property.
Okay.
Specific to this property is...
In terms of what was previously approved?
As Tom stated in his letter, 9,000, it was 9,000.
Excuse me, in 2002, it was 13,356.2 square feet.
That was approved. So, where did, where, what portion of what you're doing goes to the development coverage?
Well...
I know you're going to be looking at another application that's...
Right, well, both the...
A terrorist and a...
Right. So, specific to this application would really be both the, both guardhouses.
Just the guardhouses.
Right.
Have you broken down what the development is for just the guardhouses?
Relative to what currently exists? I mean, what they, the front guardhouse is slightly larger than what's currently there, and the rear guardhouse is really very approximately the same size.
What's driving the increase is the pool deck around the pool, and then there's a stone patio adjacent to that in the rear. That's why you're seeing this severe increase.
Shouldn't that be addressed in the next application?
It is.
But this application is asking for approval up to 18,000 also?
It's the same cumulative number throughout the project.
We're only going to deal with it once.
Just going to deal with it once.
But you should probably consider the pool deck and the patio then if you're going to grant the full development coverage and FAR, full development coverage.
Maybe we want to hold the development coverage, the FAR, until we hear the second application, first deal with...
At that point, we will have seen what it is.
Or you could hear the second application now and then deal with everything, deal with everything humanitatively.
It really is a package deal, but we've kind of separated it.
I just don't want to get into a situation where we're approving 18,000 in development coverage and we haven't even seen any evidence that it's being affected in any way, you know?
Would you like to hear the second?
Might as well. I think we should do both.
Here's my only concern. I'm not disagreeing. You know, there are so many variances to wait and then go through all the variances seems like it's complicated, and it would be less complicated, I think, if we dealt just with the guardhouse, carriage house, and the fence now. But that's, that's just me.
Could we approve it? I just think conceptually and have it written up for us to take a look at and then give our final approval next month?
We could do that.
Is that a problem?
What's your, is your normal procedure to typically...
Normally, we don't get something as, with as many different pieces as you're asking for.
I understand.
So, to sit here and try to verbalize the approval, if we give an approval, would be very difficult.
Right. Well, my only concern with that is, in this project, time really is of the essence. We were, I've been working on this for, since January, if not prior to then, and we were trying to, we were really hoping to make an application, our initial submission back in February, and now, and that didn't happen until April. And so, you know, months are going by very quickly, and we'd really not like to lose another month.
Well, I mean, at the end of this meeting, you'll know what our decision is. You just, we just won't have the final language drafted.
Right.
Is that sound reasonable to you?
I, well, I don't...
Send him back. Go ahead.
Yes.
We recently, with Tom's approval and per the direction of the Secret Service, removed the guardhouses because they were, one was extremely moldy, the other one floods when, the one closest to the dead end floods whenever it rains badly.
They got umbrellas for days like this, right?
Well, so, the guardhouses are taken down, and they are out of their vehicles right now. So, they're in, at the end of the driveway, in their vehicles, guarding the property. So, time is of the essence to at least get the guardhouses approved. So, the idea, I think, and the way Brad had structured this approval was to get the guardhouses separate from everything else so that we can at least get the guardhouses approved. Because what we're trying to avoid is the Secret Service saying, "We're bigger than you, go build it, we don't need approvals from anybody." That's what we're avoiding by coming here and doing this. So, to separate the guardhouses completely from everything is the goal, since we did take them down already.
Right.
Well, I don't think our object is to hold this project up. Our object is to make a decision one way or the other. And dealing with all these pieces in one fell swoop is going to be complicated for us to make a resolution. I understand what Harvey's driving at. But I think we could deal with the guardhouse situation and the stuff that seems to be of immediate concern without worrying about the development coverage too much. We could, I think Harvey even mentioned, could we approve it with a contingency that the next application is going to be what we think it is and the development coverage isn't going to... Well, I don't know. Harvey's probably looking at, we can approve development coverage here, and then it's going to be increased again. We want to make sure that we don't get double teamed here.
Why can't we determine the development coverage on this project and add on to the next one?
Well, we can't, but it hasn't been broken down for us.
Well, maybe Brad could break it down.
So, at least we do all the...
He hasn't even done the measurements to be able to do it now. Well, I could do it, but not right now.
No, we don't want, we don't want to get into that. I don't think we want to get into that.
What about this? What if we go through the review of the guardhouse and you're saying, if we grant that approval, but not hold back, but wait until the next meeting as it relates to the staircase and the fence?
Well, I mean, the fence is just a renewal.
Right.
It was an expired variance.
So, as it relates to the staircase, you're...
Well, the stair's not, not critical, but, you know, again, the stair, I mean, it was built with a permit, it didn't need a variance, and we're, if anything, we're just looking to legalize that.
Right.
And there's some very minor work, construction-wise, needs to be done to make that legal. But I don't think that should really hold anything up either.
I don't think we need to go to the next meeting.
Yeah, not back to that. Right, yeah, right.
Just make sure that the development coverage number that we're using is maximum on the property, no matter what. And if they want more than that, whatever, either for the next application that we have in front of us tonight, or an application six months from now, they have to come back to us. We could do a development coverage number that is the maximum, no matter what.
And then, if you don't, if you reduce any of the other, you know, development or FAR in the next application, I guess you could reduce that number in a later resolution? That would be, that would probably be the result.
I don't see a problem with it. I think we can handle both in one night.
I don't think it's a problem.
You feel confident about these numbers as they relate to the coverages?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, okay, fine. Do we want to go ahead and deal with this, or do we want to hear the second application?
I think we should deal with this one.
Okay, all right.
And use the development coverage number on this one as the max.
Okay.
Because the next one is going to have some development coverage numbers, but they're already included in this number.
Yes, yes, right.
So, we'll just use it as a max. If the property exceeds it for whatever the reason, then you're in violation. If it doesn't exceed it, you're not in violation. I don't think it's any more complicated than that.
Can we approve the development coverage for this application, leaving the actual number open, but just indicating that whatever number, a proportion of the 18 increase total that they're requesting is necessary to be granted with this application? And then, we'll get to the next application, and if it's approved, it'll be full 18. I don't want to have two separate applications.
Well, you could condition, you could, what I would probably do is condition it upon, condition the development coverage upon the granting of the next application. If the next application is not granted in full or is reduced, the development coverage number would then be reduced to the appropriate amount for the, for the guardhouses. That's what I would probably recommend.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay. I think we've lost them. But is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No? Anything else for the board at this point?
This gentleman, do you...
Oh, yes.
I live next door.
No, please come up.
Oh, sorry.
Speak into the microphone and identify yourself, please.
Yeah, Greg Bressner, Seven Green Lane. So, my backyard looks into the front yard of where the original house was, and I've been there 18 years. And it's, they're great, and it's never been a problem, ever, so...
Is that a political segment or something?
No, 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 the service, the Secret Service, I mean, they've been fantastic. So, we don't want to create any impediment to what they need because we want them to have everything they need. Where is the second house? Is it on upland?
The guardhouse?
The second one you want to add?
It's right back here.
So, it's on the other side of the property?
The existing one is here, and the proposed one will be just...
Just right behind it.
Right behind you.
Oh, okay. I just didn't understand the variance when I got it at home. It was very complicated.
Sure.
Okay. Just wanted to understand. Thank you.
We barely understand it ourselves. Doesn't really matter. Okay. I move that we close the public hearing. I'm sorry, anything else?
I'll second.
Well, those in favor say aye. Aye. Let's see.
We should deal with the secret thing first.
Yeah, right. So, I don't know, maybe we could work on this together, I'm not sure. So, for the purposes of this application, as it relates to SECR, this is an unlisted action, and in the opinion of the board, there are no environmental impacts.
No significant environmental impacts from the granting of the use variance.
Right, right.
You would take a separate vote on that?
Okay.
I second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, as it relates to the variances for the guardhouse at the front gate, maybe it's easier to read this. This is Tom's.
First, I think the first thing you want to address is the use variance for the, for the front guardhouse, which is based upon, you know, the standards set forth in section The first one is not applicable regarding reasonable return, so that wouldn't apply, but that, the alleged hardship regarding the property in question is unique, it's not applied to a substantial portion of the district or neighborhood, that the requested use variance granted will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and that the alleged hardship has not been self-created, but that one's not a deciding factor. So, those, those are the factors you would consider, obviously, the special circumstances here regarding national security.
Okay. As it relates to the front yard setback, where 60 feet is recorded, there's a variance of 59 feet, 90, 59.92 feet. The side yard, where 35 is required, variance of 34.01 feet is requested. As it relates to these variances, no neighbors have come forth to voice their opposition. There will be no undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit cannot be sought through other means. The variances are substantial. There, however, will be no adverse impact on the physical environment and allow for the safety of the occupants. You will have six months to start, one year to complete. There will be foundation surveys required for the guardhouses.
One question before we second on that.
Sure, yeah.
Item number five on that front guardhouse with the development coverage.
Right.
Is that the one that we're going to make contingent on the, on the rest of the property being?
Yes, sir.
So, we should write, we should have that in our resolution?
Right. So, are you going to have a separate resolution for the front guardhouse, the rear guardhouse, the height of the fence?
I think so.
And the rear stair? Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would be conditioned upon...
Conditioned upon the cumulative coverage on this entire property.
Right. And if it turns out you're not granting as much development, as much development in a later application, it would have to be reduced. The building coverage that's granted would be reduced appropriately.
So, we're going to take that as a separate resolution?
Yes, I guess.
The building coverage that's granted would be reduced appropriately.
So we're going to take that as a separate resolution?
Yes, I guess.
Do both guardhouses together?
Yeah, we can, okay, okay. Secondly, the guardhouses at the north or left rear corner of the property. Again, as it relates to the use variance, the issue of reasonable return is not appropriate. The hardship is unique to the owner's property, not applicable to a substantial portion of the zoning district. Granting this application will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and the hardship is not created because of the requirements for these structures. Here we have, as it relates to the area variances, we have a reduction of the side yard building setback from 35 feet to 16.5, a variance of 18.5. A reduction of the rear yard building setback from 50 feet to 13.25, a variance of 36.75. And the building, development, and floor area ratio will further be dealt with in the, with the subsequent.
I believe, I believe the building coverage, the building coverage and floor area is not affected by any of the other variances. I think it only relates to the guardhouses. That's the only one that is correct. So that one you should include in this resolution. It's only the development coverage that would be impacted by the other application. So that should be included. So the allowable building coverage and floor area ratio should be dealt with in these resolutions for both of the, both of the guardhouses.
And we're stipulating that the variance for the development coverage of this 91, 81.45, will be the maximum?
Contingent on the next.
Contingent on this subsequent application.
Correct.
Right?
So the two, the two, the building coverage, the allowed is 4,565.34, proposed is 5,397.4 for a variance of 832 square feet relating to both guardhouses, and the floor area ratio allowed is 6,098, proposed is 7,114, and so is the variance for the guardhouses is 1,016 square feet.
Right, okay. So again, this will, it will not be an undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit cannot be sought through other means. The variances are substantial. There will be no adverse impact on the physical environment. This will, this application, variance is not self-created. This will allow for the safety of the occupants of the home. You'll have six months to start, one year to complete. We'll need foundation surveys of these, this section of guardhouses.
We could do that now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There's one other condition that the applicant had agreed to, the removal of the guardhouses upon the current occupants no longer residing at the property.
Right.
Which, again, it's a unique circumstance. Typically, they would run with the land, but in this case, it would be appropriate to include that, since the applicant has offered to remove that, that should be included.
And how are we dealing with the five-year period as far as the?
That was part of the old, that was part of the prior approvals. If you want to include that, that's up to you, or you could just include the one upon removal, upon the vacating of the current occupants.
Current occupants, okay.
I think that's the way to do it.
Yeah, okay.
In addition, the eight-foot-high fence will be lowered to six feet.
Yeah, we're going to make that next. So I think we should, we should throw away with the five-year renewals and just have it removed when the current occupants vacate the premises.
Agreed, okay. I have a second on that.
I'll second all of that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, the exterior stair to the second-floor office, the Secret Service stair. Setback has been reduced from 50 to 6.28, a variance of 43.72 feet. Variance for increasing. So here in this case is the?
It's included in the other two.
The building coverage will be?
I think the staircase is not included.
It's not included.
It's only a rear yard variance, I think, that's required for the staircase.
So that's all we need here?
Right, that's okay.
That should be an individual variance, not tying into the fence.
Yes, right, right.
But we're doing it as a separate resolution.
Right, separate resolution.
In this case, no neighbors have come forth in opposition. There will be no change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit cannot be sought through other means. The variance is substantial. The proposed variance will have no adverse impact on the physical environment, and is not self-created because of the requirements for the safety of the occupants. Do we need a new?
So we're just legalizing?
As built or?
We'll get a final survey on the property.
Okay.
Which will show that.
Okay. So there'll be a final survey that will be required at the conclusion of the work? Okay.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And the board's going to allow that to remain regardless of the occupant, correct?
Well, we didn't put any stipulations on the variance. The variance is there now.
Okay, I'm just, okay.
Lastly, on this application, as it relates to the perimeter fence, the existing fence is eight-foot high, a variance was granted at 99. It exceeds the maximum allowable height of six feet. And again, a variance is required for the two-foot excess that exists. Again, no neighbors have appeared in opposition, no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit cannot be sought through other means or methods. A variance is not substantial. There will be no adverse impact on the physical environment, and again, for safety reasons for the occupants, this is not self-created.
Before we go further?
Sure.
The applicant has agreed to reduce the height to six feet if they vacate the property?
Yes.
Right, so that would be a condition to the?
Condition out in the, in the resolution.
Will it be that the fence is removed or removed or reduced to six feet?
No, just reduced to six feet. Then it complies. We don't need a variance anymore.
I don't know which is easier, but.
If you want to remove, you could remove it too. You could do either, remove it or reduce it to six feet.
Okay.
Good.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay. Second.
So the, so this, the second application before you is only for seven variances, and they?
Why so easy?
So they pertain to a generator, a terrace, a pool, and another terrace, the pool terrace itself. So there's a generator in the front corner of the property, very near the existing guardhouse, and that generator was installed without a permit, and it encroaches on both the front yard and the side yard setback. We were initially proposing to leave it where it is, but based on the, on the size and location of the new guardhouse, we need to relocate that generator. And what we're doing is, is we're moving it 10 feet away, so it is co-compliant with, it needs to be 10 feet away from a structure, but it still will require, it's still encroaching on both the front yard and the side yard setback, and then?
There's no way realistically to move it so that you don't require variance?
Well, it was, that really comes, comes into, I was going to address that hardship issue, but I'd be glad to talk about it now. Where it's located is, it really has to do with Secret Service issues in terms of lines of sight, and there's trip sensors around the property, and just in terms of, you know, they had a saying where it was located, and it's, it is close to both property lines, but it is just where it is for certain reasons. Now, the flagstone terrace, there's a flagstone terrace back in that corner of the property. That terrace was also built without a permit, and so we're trying to legalize that. So we need a building permit, but we also need variances for it. So that terrace would encroach on the rear yard setback as well as the side yard setback. Then the pool, the pool?
I'm sorry, in effect, that's a patio?
A terrace, a patio, essentially the same thing.
Yes.
Right. So the pool, I believe there was a, there was a previous pool there, that pool was removed and replaced with a new pool back in 2003, which needed a variance for encroaching on the front yard and side yard setbacks, along with the development coverage variance. And now what happened was the, they got a permit, they got a variance, but the permit was never closed out. So then it expired. And so really, what we're looking to do is, is to, is to reapply for it, to legalize it. So we, so for the pool itself, we're, it's really just a reduction of the side yard setback. And the last issue has to do with the pool, the terrace around the pool. So again, so the pool was built with a permit, needed a variance, and then at some point after the pool was built, the terrace was built around it. And so we would need a, we're looking to legalize that with a, with a building permit, but it also needs variance for encroaching on the side yard setback, and then really all of these issues kind of had to do with development covers as well, of these four, these four items. And then, you know, with regard to the balancing test, you know, all these things have been there for quite some time. I mean, dating back from, you know, early 2000s, so they've been there for 15 or 20 years. You know, they're clearly not going to create an undesirable change in the neighborhood. There's no adverse effect or any impact on neighbors. The development coverage could be seen as substantial, and it could be achieved by other methods. They're, but they, again, they've been there. Yes, they were built without permits, but we're looking to legalize them.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? Okay. Any questions?
I think the only thing we need to consider, the fact that they were built without permits, if they did have a permit that had come to us originally, would we have grants, or would we have not? We can determine that we would have granted it. As such, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't now. That should be just something to put in your mind.
Anything you want to add, Tom?
We were just talking, Eric and I, the parts of the fence that are the barrier part for safety of the pool have to remain. From the previous, when we were talking about the fencing, we cannot remove the fence in its entirety when the occupants leave the property. A section that's the safety aspect in regard to the pool barrier has to remain.
I don't think, I don't think we're going to remove the fence anyway. We're just going to lower it to the legal height.
That would be acceptable.
Which is six feet. I think, didn't we write that in the, in the resolution? I hope we did, because that's what I thought we said.
We said, but I wasn't, I don't know if it was clear whether it was remove or six feet or?
No, we lowered it to six feet.
You wanted to leave it at the six feet required.
So we were saying that we're going to require that the fence remain?
In that section?
Be put in compliance with the code, which is six feet.
Has to remain in, now which section?
Doesn't have to remain. If they want to take it out, it's their personal.
We talked about the part that surrounds.
But the fence has to remain around the pool.
For the pool, the pool, that's a whole different ballgame.
That could be a condition of this?
The code requires the fence around the pool. The pool fence is not eight feet high. I hope it isn't, is it?
No.
No, but let's say a future one came along and want to remove all the perimeter fencing. They could do that, but they would just have to fence the immediate pool area.
Right, exactly. That's what the code requires.
Yeah.
But what I, what I want to make clear is that our previous resolution was that the fence can stay. If they would like it to stay, it just has to be put down to meet the code, which is six feet.
That's what we said.
If they want to take it out, that's, that's fine.
The perimeter fence.
Yeah, the property perimeter. The pool fencing is a whole different thing. We're not even, we're not even thinking about that.
Is there a separate fence around the pool that's different from the perimeter fencing?
No, the perimeter fencing is serviced as the pool fence.
Right, that's the concern.
Well.
Two sides of the perimeter fence serve as the pool fence, and then two sides are a pool fence, which are, which is the 48-inch standard.
Yeah, pool fence doesn't have to be six feet. It could be like?
That one's 48 on two sides, and the other two sides are the perimeter, which is eight feet.
Eight feet.
Yes.
They lower the perimeter to six, everything is in compliance?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I'm just not seeing the fencing on the, on the site plan, and that's what's confusing. I see the perimeter fencing, but I don't see the pool fencing.
I would agree, doesn't, the survey, neither the surveyor nor my site plan shows, shows a perimeter fence on the pool. So either the surveyor missed that or, but Damon, you're sure there's 100%.
There's a picket fence, the perimeter fence, the pool fence is picket, right?
It's picket, and they are self-closing gates.
Yeah, it's right on, it's right on.
Two gates that service it, and there are self-closing gates.
On the site plan, it shows a picket fence.
I see a picket fence, but it's not enclosed. It doesn't go to the end.
It doesn't show a closing line.
It doesn't show going to the stockade.
It's not clear.
Yeah, it does connect to the fence, but we can have a question.
Why don't we put a condition in that at such time as anything is done to the perimeter fencing, that they be required, property owners are required to comply with the code regarding the pool fencing?
I think that's okay. I mean, I think it's, you know, they have to always be in compliance with.
They will be in violation if they don't have a fence there. So whether they take the fence out, lower the fence, or change it in any way, they still have to be co-compliant with the pool. So they would be issued a violation if they weren't.
So we don't need to deal with that then?
Really do not.
I don't, I don't think so. Quite complicated anymore than it is.
I think you have to take a vote on this one.
On what?
On the resolution.
That we haven't made yet, right? Right, right, right.
We're getting there.
So, right, we're getting there. I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion? Okay, as it relates to the generator, two variances are required, front yard variance of 30.5 feet, side yard variance of 27 feet. And are we including the development coverage in?
That'll be, when you talk about the terrace and the pool, you can discuss the development coverage at that point.
There are no neighbors who have appeared in opposition. This will not create undesirable, this will not result in an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit cannot be sought through other means. The variances are substantial. The variances, there will be no adverse impact on the physical environment, and these are not self-created hardships. The, here, this is, what we're doing is legalizing a generator which, which will be relocated minimally within the property, and this, like? within the property, and this, like most other things on both applications, will appear on a final survey. Is it, are you putting a new pad down as it relates to the generator, is this?
We'll have to extend it.
Extend it?
Yeah.
But we will remove the portion that it was resting on, we will remove that portion, cut that off, so that we don't increase impervious surface.
Do you go out and look at that as there?
I've been to the site already prior to, and I will be going to our construction inspections.
Okay, okay. For these reasons, I move that we approve this aspect of the application.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, the flagstone terrace behind the detached garage in the northeast corner, there is a rear yard setback. Rear yard variance required in the amount of thirty point five feet, for the side yard, nineteen point eighty-three feet. This element was built without a permit, a new permit will be applied for in order to legalize its existence. This will result in no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, the benefit cannot be sought through other means, the variances are substantial, there will be no adverse impact on the physical environment.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before the board votes, I would probably recommend doing the terrace, the pool, and the pool terrace together, because those all relate to the development coverage as well, and there are not a lot of variances, which ones, so I think it makes sense to do all those in one resolution.
Okay. Next, we have the pool. The pool will require a side yard variance of twenty-one feet. The permit was never closed, the variance expired, a new permit will have to be applied for. The pool terrace requires a side yard variance of twenty-six feet sixty-nine inches.
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six nine feet. What, six nine? Feet. As it relates to these last three items, the, there will be a variance of the development coverage of nine thousand one hundred eighty-one point forty-five square feet.
It's a portion of the nine thousand one eighty-one point four-five is applicable to the pool terrace, the pool and the terrace exactly.
Right, okay. Again, no neighbors have appeared in opposition, no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, benefit cannot be sought through other means, the variances are substantial, there will be no adverse impact on the physical environment, and this is not a self-created hardship. There will be- There's no actual work occurring on these three elements, right?
Right.
So once permits have been applied for, you will have one year to complete the-
Right, a final survey will legalize it.
Did you do the pool?
This is the pool, the terrace is.
Right.
Right. Anything else?
I think that's it.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Have your variances. Good night.
Good evening, my name is Martin DiGioio, I work with Dennis Noskin and we've been representing Mrs. Rakipi for the past year, been working with the town closely to resolve any use permit issues, and there was no addition to the building, it's, the building is status quo when she purchased it, she found out that she had to get a use permit for the basement, and that triggered a whole, she has a CO going on the second floor, the main floor where the doctors are, and the second, third floors for an existing apartment to remain. The basement that's in the back of the building, or access through the back of the building on the lower floor, has been a beauty hall for quite a few years, and going through the process, we found out that we needed more parking spots that the property could afford to carry, so we're here tonight asking for a variance of two spaces. In effect, the planning board has approved our plans and the requests contingent upon your approval of the reduction of the parking, and we have one other thing to work with the town, they want us to look at the existing lighting and see if there's any improvement that we could do.
Where does the, did the planning board issue a determination under secret, or is it a type two, or what did they make?
There was no, if I'm not mistaken, it's like type two, wasn't it?
Type two action, okay.
So I'm reading from the memorandum, it says the planning board has taken into consideration that the residential apartment use and the service uses on the site are non-competing uses, and that some of the gross interior floor area and ground floor areas dedicated to storage rooms and mechanicals. Accordingly, the planning board determined that it is appropriate to reduce the required parking by three spaces, leaving the total requirement of twelve parking spaces for the site uses. It's important to note that the site has been functioning with the existing uses for many years and that the parking has not been a problem.
Correct.
And then it goes on to say that the planning board is in support of the application, applicants, application to the zoning board for a reduction of two required parking spaces that cannot be met on site.
Correct.
Oh, you have ten.
We have ten on the site.
We have twelve.
With one, it would include one eighty-eight spot.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application?
No.
No.
Anything, Tom? No, perfect, okay. I move that we close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application made by Anjanar Rakipi to twenty-nine King Street, with a variance to reduce the number of parking space, number of required parking spaces for a multi-use building on the property located to twenty-nine King Street by two spaces for the following reasons. The planning board has demonstrated that in connection with the application made by the applicant to the planning board, that there is sufficient, has been sufficient parking for the uses that have been conducted on the property for a number of years, has also recommended that the zoning board approve the reduction based on their review and analysis of the proposed changes. No neighbors have appeared or written in opposition, do we ask if there are any?
Yes, there were none.
The granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties, nor the feasible method is available to the applicant, which is likely to achieve the benefit being sought. Requested area variance is not substantial, the proposed variance will not have any adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or the district, and the applicant's difficulty or hardship was not self-created. For those reasons, I move that we approve the application. No conditions necessary. All those in favor?
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, have your variances.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Bernard?
Hi, good evening. Applying for a variance to install a generator for our home, looking to have it-
Identify yourself for our secretary.
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear, did you identify yourself?
My name's Scott Bernard.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Looking to install, apply for variance to install a generator for our home, looking to have it. I appreciate everything. I included some pictures, and you can see on the layout exactly where we would want it. It's a little unique, because we've got two front yard roads at a weird angle, so it's, I guess, under the required sixty feet, kind of anywhere you put it, really. And our backyard, to get there, you'd have to go through the patio, this patio, the pool, the plumbing area, and the septic field as well to get there, and also the electrical paneling, where we look to hook it up, is kind of right under the front steps in a crawl area that goes right through, as well as the propane tanks are already there for the pool, so we'd like to have, or apply for the variance for the generator, to see if it can be put in there to be able to have a backup generator for the house, in case we lose power with babies and all that fun stuff. And I included some pictures where you can see from the road, that it slopes up, can't really see over, and then where we would be looking here to put the generator in this area, which is similar to what you see on the other side from the whole picture.
So in your estimation, will the generator be visible from the road?
No, not at all. At the moment, you can't even see the propane tanks, if you see, the generator is even going to be lower.
And so no neighbor will find us objectionable in terms of its location?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
There's already in that area, you know, pool equipment, that kind of stuff.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application?
No.
I move that we close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll take this one. I move that we approve the application of Scott Bernard for a twenty-eight foot, is it side yard?
Front yard.
It's a front yard.
Front yard.
Front yard variance for the installation of a standalone generator. For the reasons, the granting of the variance will create no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. This appears to be the best feasible location to achieve the benefit. The variance is not substantial, and the granting of the variance will create no adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. This is self-created, however, this appears to be the best location for the generator, and as the applicant indicates, it won't be visible from the road. For those reasons, I move that we approve the application. One, six months to start, when you complete the installation of the generator.
I'll start.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, have your variances.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Check.
My name is Bob Zomwalt, and I'm an architect helping Joan Chan legalize the enclosed porch in her house. And basically, what we have is a house that was built eighteen feet and change from the property line originally, and the porch was on the first floor and there are bedrooms above it, so actually, it was just a matter of enclosing that first floor, and so we're just asking for a variance to legalize that.
So no change to the footprint, all you're doing is closing what's there today? Right. Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application?
How long ago was it enclosed? Didn't you say, I almost missed it.
A couple of years ago.
Recently, maybe a year or two ago. What happened was a tree damaged the corner of the house that we're talking about, and so while the contractor was fixing up the second floor, he offered to enclose the porch later on, and so it got enclosed without a permit.
So the second floor was overhanging?
Yes.
The porch?
Yeah, there's pictures of it.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
And the first floor is really the part that is enclosed porch.
He offered to enclose it at no cost, or?
Not at no cost, but the owner, Joan Chan, didn't realize there was a permit needed, and she said to go ahead, so it did a pretty good job.
I move that we close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the application of Bobby Check and Joan Chan, Check, for legalization of an enclosed porch, we approve of all of these reasons. The applicant had worked on to enclose the porch without a permit, without malice, not realizing that a permit was needed, they were having worked on to fix damage to their house to restore them, and this seemed to just fall right into place with it. It has not affected the neighborhood in any adverse way, though no neighbors have called to complain about it or spoken in opposition to this project. The granting of the variance, which is going to be, you have one point one five feet, are we that accurate, or should we make it a two-foot variance?
We're working on two feet.
Okay, we'll call it a two-foot variance, should be approved for the following reasons. The granting of variance has not and will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, it's, in this case, it's not a substantial variance, there has been and will not be any adverse effect to the physical environment or conditions in the neighborhood. This is a self-created hardship in that a permit should have been applied for, but that should not be determinative in our deliberations, and do we have any measurements that we need, Tom, are we okay on that?
We already have them submitted.
The building department has the measurements, and for those reasons, we should grant.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, have your variances.
Erlich?
Hello, my name is John Erlich, I'm here with my wife Linda, we are applying for a variance respect to installation of a generator. Generator is necessary because we've had multiple power failures, contact doesn't seem to be able to keep running with roadlit, so we are here to apply for the variance because apparently we are not, we need two front yard setbacks and an R1A required for sixty feet, we are apparently- We are apparently under that, required 35 feet from Apple Tree Close.
I think you need a side yard and a front yard.
Side yard and a front yard, yeah.
Fine.
And that's pretty much it. We've had no objections from the neighbors, and in fact, we have a letter of support from one of our neighbors that they're in compliance. The Larabells, who are our closest neighbor, have actually written a letter to the board saying that this is okay for them.
Did you receive a letter?
I have a copy of it here.
Give a copy to the board.
Sure, absolutely.
To the secretary, if you don't mind. Thank you, if my question. Mr. Erlich, could you explain to us how you chose the location for the generator?
Absolutely. The location is the, it's the closest, it's the closest connection to the house. It's heavily buffered. We have bushes, a significant number of bushes that are in front of where we're going to be putting the generator. You cannot see it from the side either because it's heavily wooded, so it's not visible from either Apple Tree Close, nor is it visible from the front yard. And from a noise point of view, hopefully, we won't need to use it, so that noise won't be an issue.
And where is the, how is it being powered? Is it, it's electric? Or is it, I'm sorry, is it propane?
This will be gas.
Yes.
And it'll be direct, that's the reason, the place where it is, it's closest to the gas connection. We would have to put it in the back, which would make it legal. It would be a very expensive move.
And the electric connection is where? Is it at that corner of the house?
Yes, it's within 20 to 30 feet. If you don't have a map by now, we're not sure.
We have a survey here, but...
Yeah.
And how close is the generator to the house?
About five feet away.
Five feet? Yeah.
It's okay.
It can be up to 18 inches from the house.
So we've noted the location, and this area right here is buffered. We have all the buffer from the front to Roaring Brook Road.
Right.
But we've also got to Apple Tree Close, which probably is, which is not even a street because it's not plowed, so.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application?
I just want to add one thing.
Yeah, sure.
So I'm looking at your site plan and survey. It looks, you forgot to mention that you have an existing legal non-conforming structure, right? The house is...
Well, the garage, which is actually attached to the house.
So it was built at a time that it was legal to build it where it is, and then the code was changed. So again, it makes it more necessary that the placement is where you've indicated.
Thank you, yes. I move that we close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion. I move that the Erlich application for a, the installation of a generator requiring an 11-foot side yard, 38-foot front yard variance, approved for the following reasons. The installation will not result in an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Benefit cannot be sought through other means or methods. The variance is substantial. There will be no adverse impact on the physical environment. The garage addition... I'm sorry, the structures currently are legal non-conforming. You will have six months to start, one year to complete, and I should add, there's one neighbor who has announced that they're in agreement with the installation, and no other neighbors have objected. For these reasons, I move that we approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, have your variance. You're welcome.
Epstein.
Okay.
Promised us to be fast. I'm Bill Spade, architect. Here with me tonight is Olga Epstein, property owner. Olga and her husband Jason live on a house on 93 DeVoe Road, and they're looking to construct an attached two-car garage, as well as put a deck on the rear of the house. The, we require for those two projects, building coverage variance and a development coverage variance. The purpose of the garages, by the way, is to address some deficiency with the existing garages, and I'll just ask Olga to address that briefly.
Good evening. Yeah, the current garage is very small. It's very hard to fit a regular car in it, and I drive an SUV and I have small kids, so I end up leaving the car in the driveway. It's also very difficult in the wintertime, so, and also if I have groceries, it's just very hard for us to, it's kind of an unusable garage at the moment.
Yeah, so the existing garages are really at the basement level underneath the first floor of the house. Ceiling height's seven feet, and the doors are six foot six tall and only 710 wide, so it's a very tight constraint to get through those doors. So we looked at actually options of trying to excavate down and do other things with the existing garages to try to do that, and it just wasn't going to work, so we're proposing a hatch, but newly constructed two-car garage, as well, the back of the house presently has some patio area, and sort of proposing the deck along the back of the house off of the family room. A principal, sorry, pull these in front of me. I have some photos of the house and some aerial photos, and I think I can hand those The principal element of the development coverage issue is that there were a number of items installed in the rear yard of the property in the 70s and 80s. A pool, a gazebo, a number of patios, all of which predated the coverage limit requirements in the code. And so in coming to this present project, the existing coverage is already about 3,000 square feet over the limit. Actually, about 2,500 square feet, sorry, over the limit. And so in proposing the new garage and the deck, which total about 1,430 square feet between them, about 900 square feet of that is over existing impervious coverage, impervious items. So effectively, we're proposing only about a 474-feet increase in the development coverage, which is about a 5% increase over the existing, just that the existing is already 25% over, given the coverage requirements. So while it's a, might be looked at as a substantial increase, just in terms of the total raw coverage requirement, that recognizing that the vast majority of that was pre-existing and existed when there was no coverage limit requirement. In addition, the building coverage, where with the 1,430 square feet of total building area, we're only 62 square feet over the building coverage limit, so it's about a 1.3% variance that we're seeking. As mitigation for these coverage items, by the way, I have a colored board that I totally forget about showing you. This shows the property, I'm using green, the zoning setbacks are in blue, and then the proposed garage and deck are in orange. We're totally compliant with setback requirements with regard to the proposed structure. Again, it's the development building coverage. We are also proposing to remove portions of the existing paved driveway in order to reduce the amount of development coverage there. Those are areas that are not needed, that are dashed in here along the right side property line. I think it's the north side of the property as you're looking there, maybe not, the right side property. So there is, we're making some effort to reduce that amount of paved surfaces. But I was starting to mention that we're also proposing to install a drainage system in the rear yard, and you may have gotten a plan that showed, by Rain Concepts, that shows a drainage system in the rear yard. The, this property and its two neighboring properties on either side are, have regular issues of surface water coming onto the property from large property behind them. It's been an ongoing problem that these neighbors have, you know, share in terms of an issue. So the Epstein's are proposing to install a trench drainage system to try to help pick up some of the water that comes onto their property and bring it to the street where there is an existing stormwater system in the street. And so the plan you have there represents that system that's being proposed. We will also connect the new garage into that system so that the surface water is, from the garage, is also drained into that. We have met with the neighbors therefore, the neighbors to either side of the property, and describing this variance that we require, also showing the drainage system that they're proposing, and both neighbors are supportive of both the project, the proposal, as well as the, you know, appreciate that they're going to install that drainage system to help alleviate some of these concerns. The, and so therefore, you know, we feel that we represent that the immediate neighbors support the application.
Could you spend a minute, Bill?
Yes.
I appreciate that you're taking out a section of driveway.
Right.
The new driveway, could you speak to its size and dimension?
Okay.
It appears to be large, you know, and contributing obviously to the coverage issue.
Okay. So the existing driveway is remaining, so all driveway you see there is existing driveway.
Okay.
The only piece of new driveway is immediately in front of the new garage.
I see.
There's a band of landscape bed there, a couple of trees, that will come out to install a new driveway there, but the vast majority of what you're looking at is driveway, is existing driveway.
Okay.
So in effect, we're reducing the amount of, effectively reducing the amount of driveway with the portion that we're removing, if you include that little flag that goes out behind into the rear property.
Where's the existing garage?
Underneath the house. So if you, I'll point out, come up the driveway right under here. The existing garage, garages are underneath the house right here.
And it's...
It's basement level.
So a very big driveway. Which part of this driveway was here before?
Can you take away part of it?
Why was the driveway so big in this place?
Tremendous. That's what it was, what can I tell you? I mean, part of it was, they have this, that circle that's represented there as a little landscape circle, so there's a nice maple tree in there that's going to be relocated, but partially the size of the driveway, I think, was for this kind of turnaround that they were, and again, prior owners had created that. So maybe the hatch, I see now that we hatched that driveway, misleading in terms of saying that's all new driveway, that's existing driveway, they're going to end up having to repave it once the garage work is done.
How about, you mentioned some of these structures that were on the property when the new owners acquired the property.
Correct.
Any of those can be, can any of those be removed because this owner isn't interested in them, or must they all remain?
They, we would like them all to remain. It's a pool, it's a gazebo next to the pool, it's a shed, it's a trellis with a patio. The, you know, I would say conservatively, 80% of that development coverage is brick walkways that are all through the backyard.
Right.
And, you know, while certainly brick walkways count in terms of impervious coverage, they are not, you know, they're not, you know, there's a lot of gaps between them, not necessarily in the greatest shape, so they allow water to still, you know, go through them in a large measure. So the structures actually represent a very, you know, I would say a small amount of the total impervious coverage, it's really patio areas.
Okay.
And again, all of that pre-existing, their ownership of the property.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application?
I have a question.
Sure.
Where is the driveway that you removed? What, is it on plan here?
Yeah, where those new proposed trees along the property line.
Okay.
The driveway goes right to the property line, so we're cutting away a seven-foot strip of the driveway to be able to install those trees. In fact, I failed to mention that we're installing those trees as screening to help the immediate, the next-door neighbor there with screening that driveway garage area. They appreciate it.
So the 470-foot new development coverage would be net after the...
Net after that, correct, right.
Do you have a partner, or have you always had a partner?
I've always had, I've had a partner for about 30 years, officially as my partner in business. It's been 16 years, so, yes. She's a licensed architect and does most of the design work for us, and blessingly, we're busy enough.
Bill, how many cars do the existing garage accommodate?
Two. It's a two-car garage.
And the new one?
Two cars as well.
Same.
Correct, right.
I move that we close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion at the application of Olga Epstein for the construction of a new two-car garage, requiring a building coverage variance of 258 square feet and a development coverage variance of 3,304 square feet.
Anthony, may I interrupt a second? We actually submitted at the end smaller numbers than those, and our initial submission to the building department had larger numbers, and we've...
These are the building department's numbers right now, but you...
So it's fine if you want to approve it with those larger numbers, that's...
Oh.
Sorry, I meant to make that point, that we actually reduced them. Do you need something?
Well, no, I can, I have notes here for, let's see if this is correct, development coverage variance of 2972, 0.8 square feet?
It's always a matter of which number, which sheet am I looking at?
Yeah, okay. I have other numbers here that I was trying to use the building department's numbers.
Yeah.
But we have allowable coverage of, development coverage of 9545, and you're proposing 12518?
Correct.
Okay, that's the good news.
I didn't have the net number right in front of me here, so, sorry. I didn't have the net number right in front of me here, so, sorry.
So, we'll use that number.
Great.
Which gives you a twenty-nine seventy-two point eight square feet variance on development coverage. And the building coverage, check, check this number as well because it may be different than the other sheet that I had.
Right.
Allowable forty-six seventy-two point nine and proposed forty-seven thirty-five?
Correct.
Okay, so that's a little bit easier. Gives you a sixty-two point oh four.
Correct.
On building coverage.
Right.
So, that's the two coverages that we're going to use.
Exactly.
If you're happy with that, I'm happy with that. And I propose that these should be approved for the following reasons. The current owner bought this property that already had some development coverage problems because the former owner had done a lot of development work on the property. So, it's not really a self-created hardship. The two-car garage that exists is virtually unusable in the modern sense of the vehicles that we all have. A new two-car garage will be a much, much needed addition to the quality of the property. Part of the, of the application will be removing some existing driveways, which is going to help us on our building surface requirements. The applicant has proposed to include new screening on the driveway side of the property, which is going to screen it from its neighborhood and enhance both properties in so doing. There will be no other, you know, be no adverse environmental impacts to granting of this variance. There will not be an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood if we grant the variance. Well, technically, this is a self-created hardship. It should not be held against the owner, the applicant because the property as it exists needs, really needs these improvements to make it a more viable, modern residence. There have been no neighbors in opposition to this application. And then, if you can start within six months and finish within a year, we should grant. We'll need foundation surveys on the new garage, of course, prior to framing.
Yep.
I'll second.
Hold on a second, please, say aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Catherine O'Connor, fourteen Hayrick Lane, job, can you hear me?
Yes.
I would wish to apply to legalize an outdoor fireplace and patio and stone sitting walls that were in existence on our property when we bought, purchased it in two thousand and eight, well, sorry, we purchased it in two thousand and fourteen. We didn't realize there was any issue with them until we were notified by the town that they needed to be legalized and also variants because there's, we don't meet the fifty-foot set, rear setback. It's thirty-foot at one point. One part of the chimney has a setback of fifty-five, but part of it is thirty. So, we needed thirty-foot variants. We weren't, it was in existence, as I say, when we bought the property. It was listed as a feature of the property. It was shown in photos on the listing of the property, so... But now that we know that it doesn't have a permit or variants, we wish to legalize it and set the record straight.
Are you, are you selling the...
No, 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 we're living there.
Well, how'd you find out that it was illegal?
We got a note from the town to say...
It's based on a complaint.
But yet, that complaint doesn't show up in any of the correspondence. We've only received letters of support, from what I've seen.
Is there anyone in the audience?
I haven't asked yet, but we'll find out. Okay.
Yes, a lot of the neighbors have sent letters of support and so many of them are here.
Sure. Some of the photos here, it's got like a Game of Thrones motif or something.
So, what I did, because there had been complaints about the smoke from the chimney, we do not use it regularly. We use it in the summer sometimes. And the last time it was lit, I think, was last June of twenty eighteen.
My son.
So, because there'd been issues about, apparently complaints about smoke, I have taken photos of it periodically. And I think I, I know I copied like ninety photos of, I think, each person had something like thirty photos, to catalog a series over time as to how it actually has not been lit. I even have one taken today where it's completely covered with vines. It's totally overgrown, so I don't understand why.
Is there anyone in the audience?
Yes. Let me guess, you have a comment?
My name is Nanette Silverman, and I live right next door.
You could tilt that down so it's easier for you.
Yes.
Yes.
And I live next door, ten Hayrick Lane, and I made the initial complaint. The prior owners had built this without a variants. And they just built it for future sale of the house, and they never used it. And they even came to me and said, you know, they were building it, there's no variants and no... The town doesn't know about it, but they used it for the house. And I know they took pictures, but that had nothing to do with the fact that when the new people moved in and started to use it, my entire house fills with smoke. I have an asthmatic daughter that had to go to the, go to the doctor. She has to use a nebulizer now. My, my curtains are so full of smoke, I've now cleaned them four times. It's cost me, I can't even tell you how much. My couches smell like smoke, I have to close my windows.
How far would you estimate?
I'm not far. I'm the closest point. My, their house sits like this facing the road, and my house sits like this.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get an idea, is it...
I have an aerial photo of the properties. And it's the large eight-by-ten photo in there that shows... It's a drone photo that I had taken.
So, this is your house, right?
That's an old photo by the, of the town, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yep.
That shows my house, and it shows the Silverman property.
Mrs. Silverman, does your house appear in this photograph?
I can't tell where they are actually.
I guess my question, this isn't your house, is it?
I have no idea what that is. I don't know if it's my house or not.
Do you know if this is her house? Sorry.
Okay, so that, that's the driveway, no, that's the neighbors behind us who are the closest. And Bryani Cochler is here, she's, she's our closest neighbor. In fact, they would be the only people who might object that the variants is closest to their property. And, no, this is the very corner of the Silverman's.
Of that house, okay.
Over here. And the Shaw's are here, and they're also here. Also, the Russell's are close on this side, and we're also here.
The chimney, which is built illegally, is over here.
No, it's here.
Oh, it's on this side?
Is this right here, is this it?
Okay, so my, my house is...
Ladies, I'm sorry, we need you to speak into the microphone, just so. We've got a tremendous fan base, and they'd like to hear everything that's said.
My house is directly where the smoke goes, wherever the wind carries it, it's directly across from their fireplace. So, it doesn't go on the other side of their house, it doesn't go in back of their house, it goes directly out into my house, where all my windows are perpendicular to it.
Is there, in your...
And actually, I spoke to them when they moved in and saying that I'm having a problem, and they, it couldn't, couldn't be, it just couldn't be, you know? They deny everything, and it's really sad.
This is beside the point. Did you say anything to the original neighbor who came to you and said he had those plans to build?
I didn't even know what it was, he just had mentioned it to me. So, I realized after they sold the house and it started being used what it was.
In your estimation, is there anything, short of not using it or taking it down, is there anything in your estimation that can be done to mitigate this circumstance?
I mean, after I told them what is happening to my house, they continue to use it constantly all summer. I can't sit on my patio, I can't have company, I can't open my windows. I feel like I live in a shell. I, we have to close our windows. I don't, I don't really love air conditioning, I like to open my windows. I can't open any windows. And being that my daughter is asthmatic, it's been really, really terrible.
Can I speak?
Yeah, just, just one second, hold on. Tom, is there anything about this application that you're privy to that we haven't heard yet, or...
I did a site inspection of this, and it's very apparent the fireplace has not been used in quite some time. There's an abundance of leaves in the firebox, there's growth growing over the top of the chimney, you know, dictating that if there was a fire made, that would have burnt and killed the vines. So, this has been dormant quite some time, multiple seasons.
When was the last time you noticed?
It could not be true. She just told you she used it in June, or through the summer.
I used it twenty eighteen.
That's last year.
The complaints?
It usually...
You've complained to me multiple times.
I've, I've come so many times, it's taken you four years to go through this and make this, to make the complaint. Four years.
When was the last time you experienced...
Last summer.
So, that's the last time you've, you've had that...
Yeah, I couldn't open my windows. She uses it in the summer, she uses it in the fall, too.
And how many, well, we've been told that it's only, the last time it's been used is the summer of two thousand and eighteen.
Right, but I'm saying in, before that, they use it in the fall, too.
Before that?
Uh-huh. Use it, you know, she said the last time they used it in the summer. Granted, that's the last time I opened my windows, you know?
Do you, is there an interior fireplace?
Yes, we have three interior fireplaces. We use one a lot, we use it actually every day.
Is it possible that you're being, you're mistaking the interior fireplace for...
No, absolutely not. I can tell you every single time, I should have made a log of it.
I have.
I'm sorry, did you want it, was there something else you wanted to say that we didn't hear yet?
Yeah, can I?
Please step into the microphone, yes.
First of all, this is the first time I've, this lady has never spoken to me. Once she, you did come to my driveway about a cat, that it was totally different issue. That's the only conversation we've ever had. So, I was not aware of anything about this fireplace until we had a letter from the town. I didn't even know why we were getting a letter to say cease and desist building this fireplace that was there from two thousand and eight. I've never spoken about this. The complaints were, if I can remember, it's logged on the computer system here, but there was a complaint last August. And I know we were in Ireland on vacation when that complaint. There was a complaint in November, I took a photo after that. The last complaint that was made, there was one in February, and there was one at the beginning of May because I was just about to leave to go to California to see my son, when I got notified that there was another complaint. And that's when the town, Tom, came out and did an inspection. So, these complaints have been right through. We do not use the fire, our patio is covered with snow, our furniture is covered up. We have three indoor fireplaces, there's no reason we would set out in the snow.
So, what, if anything, do you know would be your intention going forward? When, when would you, again, I'm just trying to understand the situation here. I mean, is this something that you would, you would plan? Putting this aside for a second.
Sure.
How would you, how and when would you use this fireplace in the future?
So, part of the attraction of this property when we bought it, as I say, the fireplace was listed, the patio was listed. It's a beautiful outdoor seating area, I have four children. We spend in the summer when, you know, when the, when the weather is nice, we sit outside, we eat outside. There's an outdoor kitchen, we enjoy the outside.
You would use this like someone else would use a freestanding barbecue or something?
No, there's a separate barbecue.
There's a separate barbecue.
We only, we've lit the fire very occasionally through the summer. I would say in any given summer, last summer it was only June that it was lit. Before that, we've, I think we've been four summers in the house. Very occasionally, if the children have friends over it, they'll light it and we'll do smores. It's probably been lit a handful of times in any given summer. And then, once the snow comes, we cover up everything, we do not go outside. We don't clear a patio, you can't even walk outside, and I have taken photos of the snow.
So, the fireplace is not a barbecue pit, it's just the fireplace that you like for effect and like, like an interior...
Yeah, we sit around.
Why is it making so much smoke?
It's, I, that I don't understand, and I think...
Is it a poor design on the chimney for it, or is it, what, you're burning? What are you burning in this fireplace?
Wood, but I've never seen any smoke from it. I think maybe there, there may be a problem, and maybe there is smoke. And I have often smelled smoke in the neighborhood. But everybody burns fireplaces with wood and, you know, indoor fire, ourselves included, so...
So, maybe we should have a masonry expert inspect your fireplace and opine on whether or not it was constructed properly or whether or not that is where the smoke is coming from. Maybe it's coming from somewhere else, and she thinks it's coming from you. We don't, we don't know that.
Yes, I was told that, that she'd seen it lit one day, and we, we'd been home that night inside. There was, it was, you know, clearly not lit. There may be smoke in the area, but it's not from that fireplace. It could very well be from our indoor fireplace.
Right. You're not, you're not required to, and I'm not asking you to if you don't want to. Are you here because you wanted to speak to this issue, or not really?
Yeah, or I'm here to support, but I certainly can because, I'm sorry, do you need...
Yeah, no, if you'd come forward, then.
My property is on Wolf Hill.
I'm sorry, if you could tell us who you are?
I'm Bryani Cochler.
Okay.
My property is behind there, it's on Wolf Hill Road, the closest house to...
Closest one of the aerial photos.
That's this? This one here?
Yes, yes, it's sort of perpendicular to ours, so they're, they're quite...
Because the, this lady lives here?
Yeah, so that is a barn on our property.
That's your barn.
Oh, okay. So, your, your actual house is a little further...
Our house is there, but we, we converted that a couple of years ago to a gym, and we and the kids are, I'm in there every day, the kids are in there every day.
You don't burn anything, do you?
We have the windows.
No.
Calories. No, actually, not even that. We have the windows open at the back facing the O'Conners. I have never, I've never seen smoke, I've never smelled smoke, ever, 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 ever. And we've lived there longer than, so the entire duration. We've had, I think I put in a letter that we've had a couple of tree issues that we've talked about. We've always been very friendly, the O'Conners have been very courteous. We have a couple of kids that overlap in years, and I just find this ridiculous.
I appreciate you taking the time to come down.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sorry, you separately wanted to, yes?
I'm Kathy Shaw, and we live at eleven Roundhill Road. And we're to the west of the Cochlers, and so we're catty-corner, we have bought the O'Conners property. We were actually living in our house at the time that the fireplace was built. And I have to say, I haven't really, I don't recall there ever being a lot of smoke from it or smelling any change. The biggest nuisance was when it was built, there was, you can see there's a lot of stone, there was a lot of noise involved, but the fireplace itself has not caused any issues for us.
Okay, I appreciate your coming. So, I'm sorry.
Can I approach the board?
Sure, yes. I'm sorry, are you here on this application? Okay?
This is a picture taken in the wintertime. Notice the positioning of the, the screen?
Tom, if you want to be on, do you want to be on the record, or you should get the microphone?
He was saying, Tom, as it relates to the screen, yes?
If you look at the picture from the wintertime, the wooden fireplace screen, the position of it is identical to the summer picture that I took about three weeks ago. This unit has not been fired or moved since that time.
Right.
We've received complaints that the fireplace has been spewing smoke, and, and that is not the case from this fireplace.
Got it, right, okay.
So, at the time you said you received the complaints, that there could not have been any use of the fireplace?
That is correct, yes. Yes, sir.
My name's John Russell, I live at eighteen Hayrick, and next door to the subject. And I'm a realtor, I've had the...
She's a lady, not really a subject.
Well, no, the house.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I've actually had that house a couple of times for sale in the real estate business. But I live next door, and I've not had any occasion to notice any unusual smoke. I am on the southeast corner of the street, and I get everybody's leaves in the winter because it's, it comes down the street. But I've not had any issues with the smoke.
You're saying the prevailing wind is...
Well, it comes, comes Silverman's, and then O'Conners, and then ours. Everybody's yard's clear, and you can't even see my stone walls. It collects.
I just want to say that, Tom said that he had many complaints. The reason I kept complaining is to see when something was going to be done, not that there was smoke that day. I said, you know, I've had smoke all summer, when are you going to do something about it? So, I came and I kept asking and asking. It wasn't like, oh, February, there's smoke. So, it, you know, I think you're, he's misrepresenting the complaint and when, and what was happening at that time. I just kept asking, when is something going to be done about this? And it's been a long time I've been asking.
Okay. So, it's just me. One thought I have...
done about this? And it's been a long time I've been asking.
Okay. So, it's just me. One thought I have is, I think, was Tony who was saying, can we have someone evaluate the fireplace, to see that it's operating correctly, if there should be some liner, or, or something else done to it? I'm not trying to fabricate work, I'm just saying, that, that's my only thought, as it relates to this. You know, to have most of the neighborhood say, I don't smell it, I don't-
Well, it depends which side they're on. I'm, and also, my house doesn't sit this way, where it can go right behind. My house sits this way, so the smoke comes into my house.
No, I understand, and I'm not questioning-
They're all on the other side, all these people are on the other side.
I'm not questioning what you're saying.
Do you have a red exterior, is that her house?
That, that's Bryanny's, that's the, that's their barn, the exercise gym that she was referring to.
That's this. They, they're actually over here.
Where is this lady's house, do we know?
Uh, yes, it's here in this corner. This is the very corner of it.
And the, and the fireplace is up here, though?
Yes.
And if, if I could just add, in relation to the neighbors who really kindly came today, one of the neighbors right across the street, the Barons, they actually also submitted a letter, which is in the file, stating that they're not, by this moment.
Again.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Michael.
Tom, much as if there's a decibel level that you can ascertain from noise, is there some, some way to?
There, there is only a criteria when you have like, an outside wood furnace. I can look at that criteria to see if it applies here. But what is the board's feeling of actually making a fire in the fireplace, and having someone speak to the results?
Meaning this board evaluated, or you mean a third party?
A third party, or the board?
Well, I, I go back to, my thought process is, have someone who knows something about this, look at it, and file a, you know, one-page report, that's either says it's operating the way it should, and there's no improvement that will do anything to mitigate any smoke, or come up with some other concept. I, you know, we don't want to-
You know, it was, it was originally built without a permit, so, I mean-
No, yeah, I don't know if you're here for the Clinton application, there are 400 things that they build without a permit, so, anyway. And, and that's why they're here. So, I don't know, what is the rest of the board think?
I, I don't think we have enough expertise on the board, and outside, and we're all pretty smart guys, I want to, I don't want to paraphrase anybody here, but I, I personally couldn't opine on the construction of a fireplace, whether it was done properly, whether it creates smoke because it was improperly constructed. I think that we should get somebody to look at that and give us, like you said, a one-page report, nothing elaborate, just saying it's improperly constructed and has to be taken down, or it's properly constructed and it's burning the way it's supposed to be burning. And from there, we can make a decision about what, what the neighbor's complaints are. I, I don't, I don't want to, I don't think I, I, I don't think I'm capable of making that determination. I don't know if anybody else is.
Would you find that acceptable as a?
So, what's the procedure after that? Because, you know, we just came to legalize this structure that was here, that had nothing to do with us, was, was there when we bought it, we weren't even aware that it needed a permit, or variance, or anything else. We just wanted to legalize it now that we'd been made aware of it.
I mean, you're right, we, any number of us could find ourselves in a similar circumstance. That's unfortunate, but it does have to be legalized.
Sure.
And so-
On the legalization aspect of it, if, if in fact initially, a permit was pulled for this fireplace, it would have been planned submitted to show how it was going to be built, and then the building department would have seen that whether or not it complied with the proper construction methods for certain fireplaces, that it would burn properly and be safe, and not create a fire hazard in the neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera. So, because that wasn't done, we don't have anything to go by to say that even though no permit was pulled, it was done properly and should be, we would have granted no matter what. So, that's why I would like to have an expert look at it, and tell us that it's, it's safe, it's not going to create a fire hazard in the neighborhood, that it was built properly, and it's, give us a reason why we have this smoke issue, if in fact that's the case. From there, we can determine whether or not we're going to legalize it and say, yes, you can have it, or say it's improperly constructed, it can't be legalized the way it is, and you have to either fix it or take it down. And again, I wouldn't make, I wouldn't make, put you through that, at time and expense, to do something without knowing full well that what we were saying was accurate. I would feel very terrible if we did the wrong thing, and you spent a whole lot of money for no reason whatsoever.
Which we already have.
Okay, I understand that. So, we want to protect the neighbor and you, too. That's my feeling.
I, I think from your perspective, this would give you a level of certainty, that otherwise, I don't think, regardless of how the board voted tonight, you'd leave here with any of that certainty, because there's nothing to say that this, this neighbor, or, or another neighbor, and though it's unlikely, might not be calling Tom in the future, so.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I guess it might just, issue is that we don't light it, is the problem.
I'm, I'm sorry?
The fact that the complaints have come in when it's not lit is what's bothering me most, but, so you suggest that I-
Look, because I, I think, I think you, in the end, you want to be able to use this in the future, right?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
So, we'd like, we'd like to know that you'll be able to do that, and it won't have any adverse impacts as it relates to the neighborhood. And I think, you know, you could consult with Tom about who you might have come look at it, if, if it isn't apparent to you. But, but, you know, we'd like to deal with this and, and settle it by the next meeting. Would be, at, at the next meeting would be your intention.
So, we, we submit for the next meeting to finalize this?
Yes, if you, if, when you get the report, if, we're talking about this report, if you provide it to our secretary, and, and then we can, we will have a vote on this next month.
It appears that you use the fireplace when no one else uses the fireplace, correct? During the summer, right?
Yeah, we sit out in the evening.
So, most people don't make fires in their homes. So, if you're making a fire in July, for instance, that's the only smoke that's going to be in the neighborhood, for, for the most part.
Right.
As opposed to other homes generating fireplace smoke. So.
Yeah, but this seems to be a constant, this, you know, the, the neighbor is saying that this is every day, and it's got, there's constantly smoke.
No, I never said it was every day. Don't put words in my mouth.
Last summer, we lit it once, the summer before, probably three times. So, it's not like it's a constant thing that we could, and when I say, I'm talking about for an hour or two at the end of the evening, it's not like it's going from four in the afternoon until midnight.
Just, I'm sorry, how many?
We have an obligation to, we have to satisfy certain criteria in order to make a decision, so, so we sort of, we, through necessity, have to have someone look at it in order for us to make a decision, because there is a question about that. Is it cleared up, then?
Okay. Yeah, I, I could have done it before, it's not a tough, but.
Right, I have a question for your neighbor. How many instances do you recall that you observed a situation where the smoke was getting into your home?
It's over the last five years, so it's all-
How many times?
I could not tell you. I could tell you I've had my drapes cleaned at least three times, and my, my couches still smell like smoke, made of mohair. And I have a daughter that got very sick once, about three years ago. She has asthma, she had a very bad, the smoke came in and she couldn't breathe, so.
It's, it's hard for, I, I understand what you're saying, I hear what you're saying, but you haven't related that to any particular instances?
Like, I, I don't know the date, and I couldn't tell you how many times. It's over five summers. They, they light it in the summer, when I have my windows open, and when I'm sitting outside, whenever it is, however many times it is, I've just complained about it. Because, first of all, I know in the beginning, when, when you had, when you presented the information, I think there's an amount of feet that it has to be from the next, next neighbor, and part of it was less than, was less than the amount that it had to be. So, maybe it's too close to my house.
No, actually, if it were legalized, it could be placed, it would have to be placed closer to your house.
What do you mean if it was legalized?
If they wanted to put it into a legal position that didn't require approval, they would actually be moving it closer to your house.
I don't understand what you're saying. You're saying if they're, if they're getting legalization, they're moving it closer?
They would be. If they, if they had to move it, so they were placed-
He's dealing in the theoretical at this point. No, no one's suggesting it's ever going to move.
What he's saying is if it, if it were built originally without the need of a variance?
It would be closer to the house.
It would be, would be farther from the property line, because now it's too close to the rear property line. They would move it closer to your house. And then they could have built it as of right, and you would have no recourse. So.
Again, I'm sorry we weren't able to resolve this this evening. If, if you could get someone to look at it the way we described, we will address it again next month.
I'm, I'm away with that, we're often away for most of the summer as well, which is partly why, you know, it's never used. So, can I have someone else representing at that?
Yeah, sure. I mean, and what you need to have, is speak to Tom, he can give you some suggestions as to the type of examination and review that we're looking for. Okay, it's not very complicated. Someone just has to see the, the fireplace in operation, observe how it affects the environment, if, if it does at all, and report back to us. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna, Mr. Phillips is my partner, and I'm gonna introduce myself. I got this one. See you. Good evening, Edward Phillips, I live at 27 Heathcote Drive. I'm here tonight to ask for a front yard area variance, to accommodate the installation of what we're calling a patio, it's really a landing off of my front porch, and a few steps that are going to descend onto a parking court that'll be in the front yard. So, again, the variance that I'm asking for is with respect to what we're calling the patio, and the steps. And the, the need to do this, and ask for the variance relief arises from the grade of my front yard. And I've attached a picture to my application that shows the difficulty. So, that the house sits up a little bit, and to make the parking court work, it's going to have to be a bit lower than where the steps off the front porch would, would leave you. Right there, right now, there's a small landing, and there's a walkway that heads over to the driveway, and there's an existing couple of steps and a small stone wall there now. That would go away, that, that would be removed, those walls would be removed, the path would be removed. And what would have instead is, again, that, that's that landing area in front of the porch, and a couple of steps down. And we're doing this because if, if you look at the sketch, or the, the plan sheet that is labeled A20, and that shows what the new driveway configuration would look like, but it also shows the area in front of the existing garage. And the issue we have there is that there's really no parking space in front of the existing garage. If I put a car back there, it's very difficult or impossible to pull a car in or out of any of those garage bays. And I've got, I've got two children this summer who are drivers, who are going to be home. Next summer, it's going to be three drivers in the house, likely. So, just in terms of functionality, this would really be a big help. The driveway, the existing driveway is narrow, and it's really frankly always been a bit of an issue. I did manage to catch two of the neighbors, I spoke to them, they have no objections or issues with what we're doing. I included a picture of the, the new house that was built next door to me. And they have a parking court, and I included this just to show, you know, they have a similar issue in terms of having to have the, deal with a small grade to making the parking court work. And I wanted to show the board, you know, what the solution would look like, and what the issue is through that picture.
Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application?
No. I move that we close the public hearing.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. That we approve the application of Banco, Pachia, and Ed Phillips, for a twenty-
Ten foot, eleven?
Eleven foot. Eleven foot front yard vari-
Twelve foot.
Twelve foot. Twelve foot front yard variance. For a patio and stairs to their residence, for the purpose of making it easier for ingress and egress out of the garage area, for the following reasons. We're granting the variance will create no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. There's no feasible method other than the variance to achieve the benefit for this property. The variance is not substantial. There will be no adverse effect if the variance is granted on the physical or environmental condition in the neighborhood. This is a self-created hardship, however, it's tremendous, and for those reasons, I view that we grant the variance to the applicant. One, six months to start, one year to finish.
Maybe a little longer than that, I just don't know if we're going to get to it this season. Twelve months to start and finish, would that be okay?
Twelve months to start and finish, with a survey at completion?
Yes.
Twelve months to start and finish?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
Thank you.
From the survey.
Yes.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes. Thank you, have your prayers.
Thank you.
Weiss?
Good evening. Adam Weiss at 321 Whipperwell Road. I'm applying for a variance to put in a basketball hoop in an asphalt, on an asphalt area, that would be forty-two and a half by twenty-two and a half feet wide in our backyard. This variance is necessary because the area would be located in is inside of the required setback of sixty feet on the rear side, and then on the side yard setback of forty-five feet. So, variance of twenty feet is required from the rear yard setback, and nine feet from the side yard setback. We have chosen this area to locate this basketball hoop, because it's really the only ideal location where it can be done, based on the layout of our property, which is just heavily sloped in the backyard. We have had direct contact with all of our immediate neighbors, including the neighbor that's, would be, that would be closest to this area, 311 Whipperwell, and all are very much supportive of the work we're doing. We've spoken to four of the five imminent neighbors, and I believe the neighbor at 311 wrote a letter stating that they were okay with this. And so, we're looking to get started on this if we're able to legalize it.
Any outdoor lighting?
We're not planning to do any outdoor lighting.
If they were to do outdoor lighting, would they need to get a variance on it, or?
We usually don't allow it.
Yeah, okay. That would be a problem.
No, I discourage that. This is the only location that's provided?
Yeah, it's, 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 it looks, there's, there's a pool area there, and then the, the land heavily slopes down, and then there's like a relatively flat area. It's not completely flat, but it would just be very difficult to, impossible to kind of even out the land in another area of our yard. So, we're trying to do it in the, in the area where it starts to get somewhat flat.
How close is the neighbor that would be closest to the?
So, there's a bunch, there's a bunch of trees, just landscape kind of-
On the property line?
On the property line. They would, like, right now, they would not be able to see it. They- They, you know, in the winter, when the leaves fall off, they probably could, but we wouldn't be using it then in the cold weather, so, but yeah, they, I went over to their house and showed them exactly where it's going to be and their comment was, as long as our grandkids can use it, we're fine.
Is that, I'm sorry.
There's no pool on this site plan.
Yeah, so, for some reason, the, prior, when we bought the house, the pool was done legally and we've spoken to Tom about it, but it was not on the site plan, so I was going to submit a final site plan when this is done with everything, is what I was told to do.
We'll have a final survey tomorrow.
Final survey, sorry, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, this one's from 92, I guess.
What is in the area that is adjacent to the, where the red printing is, is proposed asphalt court? What is that area? Why can't it be moved, flipped horizontally and then moved slightly to the left?
The red, I'm trying to visualize it exactly.
Kind of the impact of your house, I guess, is what you're asking about.
Yeah, it's, you know, if you, if the land of our backyard, it's tricky without the pool there, but you walk out, there's a pool, then there's like a sloped hill area, hilly area, which I think is the area you're probably referring to, and then it sort of flattens out.
So the pool is behind your house?
Yes.
In that area?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
So is this adjacent to Glacier Arboretum, or, this just looks like it's old Henry Glacier land stops.
I don't know.
This isn't the Sutton Farm, you know, this isn't the old-
No, no, it's not, this is just-
This section where there were a couple of houses?
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of, it'd be, I'm at the back on Whipperwell, so the neighbors kind of on a property line right to the side of the house.
Can you show me on this map?
I've indicated approximately, I was thinking, if there is nothing in this area and it were flat, why it couldn't be turned this way, moved in a little that way, and that would be totally illegal?
Yeah, without pictures, it's hard to visualize, but it, where the pool is, I think you're looking at the area where the pool, I'm not very good with these site plans, but there's no flat area besides where this court would go, so the pool would be elevated.
So Tom, it's hard for, when you don't have an accurate site plan to look at, is really, can you, from your memory, can you determine whether?
The property has a lot of steep slopes on it. He's accurately depicting where the placement is. He would require the applicant retaining walls to build this elsewhere.
That's what I needed to hear. Okay.
Let the record show that there is no one who's appeared to speak in opposition to this.
Two of them are such.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Hold those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah.
Michael said.
Michael's doing?
Michael's doing, yeah.
I move that we grant the variance to Adam Weiss at 321 Whipperwell Road for a, let's get this right, a 21-foot.
5-foot side.
So nine-foot side variance and a 20-foot rear variance, is that correct? For a basketball court. Asphalt, is it?
Asphalt, correct, yeah.
Basketball court. For the following reasons, the granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to the nearby properties. The benefits sought by applicants cannot be achieved due to the slope of the land in another portion of the property. The requested area variance is not necessarily substantial. It will not have an adverse effect on the impact of the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood. There are no neighbors who are present or written in opposition. In fact, we're told that there are three verbal, I think you said.
Four of the, yeah, four verbal.
Verbal.
You were written.
Two written, okay, two written. It is potentially self-created hardship, but it's, given the fact that the neighbors are in agreement with it, I move that we grant the variance. And when do you plan on?
Ideally, starting in the next four to six weeks.
And so with six months to start, one year to complete, and we need, do we need a survey for this?
Yes, sir.
So we'll need a survey?
Okay, yep.
I'll second.
Hold those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Thank you, have your hearings.
Thank you very much, your time.
Look, I move that the board adopt the meeting minutes for the April 24, 2019 meeting.
I'll second.
Hold those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Performed. We're off.